Let's all rise and open the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Welcome once again. This is the first meeting I think we've started in a while. It's dark outside. It seems like in the summer we come at daylight and warm, now you need down vests and a dark temperature. Must mean Halloween's coming, right? Park season. But welcome everybody. And this meeting's essentially a week late. We usually meet the second Monday, which would have been Columbus Day, which is a holiday for everybody that works for the village and elsewhere. So we pushed ours back a week. So today being October 16th, we're in the middle of the month and we'll start our regular meeting. We have a special guest, Dan, in the audience there. Dan Strieb, our highway foreman, and we'll get to his piece of the agenda after we do a few business details and then we'll work with you. So as far as minutes, because of a couple of events in September as well, we switched our workshop meeting to be on September 11th, which you'd see as short minutes sent out to you folks. Then I added on my agenda cover sheet, the formal monthly meeting we actually held on September 21st. So there were heavy minutes on that. And then the interim, Cindy included an October 6th meeting. That's where, just so everybody knows, we had a special meeting called on a Friday. We had a court grant that had to be followed by the judge. And to comply with the requirements of the court funding agency, they needed a brief resolution supporting the judge's submission. Essentially, we're applying for some new carpets and parts of the building that are used by the court and some police equipment that are used by court officers. So it was worth bringing everybody in. So that's a very short set of minutes. I've been through all of them. I made some additions and corrections, but I put a motion. Anybody else have any additions, alterations, or corrections?
I do.
You do? Where would you like us to look?
It would be on the September 21st board meeting, Village Green Monthly. The balance for the shade tree contractual. I believe it's the same as it is this month.
Do you bear with us?
Yeah, but last month it was flipped.
Right.
So that's the way it was presented. I can't change it. It was changed in a motion at that meeting. And now it's changed at the next one. This one will be changed.
Alright.
What are you referencing there Brent? I think I understood what Cindy said.
It was blank. And there was-
Oh, this here?
Yeah.
Okay. It was-
Shade tree?
Opposite though. It was incorrect, correct?
Well, no, it was deducted from the 4,000 instead of the 10-
Therefore, it was an incorrect number. It was presented that way. So I have to put it in that way.
It was presented as 4,000. And then community beautification was presented in a different light. And then we changed those. I called attention to that, so.
Right, and it was corrected.
So we're leaving it blank.
Well, I'm not totally following what you're saying Brent, but um-
Well, what I'm saying is blank and should be a number there.
Yeah. Do you know what the number should have been?
Off the top of my head, no. It was the incorrect number.
Yeah, there was, both of them were incorrect.
I'll insert the number.
I think it's probably the same as it is this month.
And we did at one meeting make a motion to correct that. So, alright. So if the clerk, I do see it on page one. Mayor Blundell made a motion to approve the treasury report and correct an entry for tree work 16,850 from line 8510-4 to 8564. Is that the correction you're looking for in the minutes?
Yep.
I think it's stated, but we'll get it right for you.
Alright.
Any other additions, corrections? Motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Almud.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good then. Like we said, Highway Foreman Strieb is here. He's hard at work in less than 12 hours from now, so we thought we'd get him in and out. If you don't mind, we could break our sequence a moment. What we're talking about is in the line one of our agenda, general business agenda, we have a heavy truck update, Highway Foreman Dan Strieb. Just to refresh the board's memory and folks out there, is regard to our 1996 international heavy rig is showing signs and failing. And so we were looking, we put out some bids. We had three bids to find an equivalent in the heavy truck world. And Dan and some of his staff had been hunting and we got a nice low bid from an outfit. And Dan went up and looked at the truck. And from my experience, what we deal with here, it's not like buying a car where you buy options that you and I are all used to as far as what we would like in a car. These trucks do major pushing, major lifting, and they last 20 years, so we want to get the right one. So Dan's been working on that. If Dan, if you want to come up, as I understand it, trucks are sold essentially as a chassis, a cab, and an engine. And you get to even pick what engine you want. And then from there, all the, what we would call options, there's probably what, 20 pages of options on that thing? And in your packet, I gave one page of like cost items. Essentially, we're talking about the base truck, about 164,000, some warranty and some minor add-ons other than the major options. It's coming out to a net of 173,000 is what we're talking about. I thought what we'd do is we'd let Dan talk to us, answer any questions we might have of him. And then we'll address it later in the meeting, what we have to do. But you know, we won't vote at this moment, but tonight, or at least by Thursday, we will have voted and move ahead. And Dan can explain a few things. But so you want to, I put the name of the brand and all that stuff, but you want to start from that and tell us what you know?
We first looked at two trucks that Tracy Road Equipment offered two state contracts. They were both Western Star trucks. First one came in with a Detroit diesel engine. Price was $236,000. Contacted Tracy Road Equipment, told them that wasn't the motor we originally asked for. He came back with a Cummins engine at $218,000. So we went out on our own and did a little internet legwork. And we found a place in Westfield, Massachusetts that sells freight liners and Western Stars. They build plow trucks. That's what they do. The two that we looked at originally were six to eight months delivery, which would put us past our snowplow season this year. The truck that we located is built, pending board approval tonight. There's a couple of modifications that need to be made on the truck, a couple of minor things. They could deliver the truck in two weeks. It's a 2018 freight liner, has a 11-foot dump body. It's an all-in-one body. It's a dump truck. The bed actually tilts sideways and turns into a sander. Comes with a two-way front plow, which means it angles both ways, just like the plow we have now. Comes with a side plow, stainless steel body, so a 20-year life expectancy is not out of question at all. It's got an automatic transmission, which would save my leg an awful lot of work. Has a Cummins 370 horsepower diesel engine, which is more than enough horsepower to do what we need it to do. It's got a, I'm going to call it a computerized sander. It's not, there's not a computer on it. It has ground speed controls, which will actually allow the truck to sand at the speed that you're going. It'll regulate the amount of material flowing. If you're going faster, you come into an intersection, it'll slow down the flow to sand. Should enable us to cut back our material usage even more. The sander I'm using now, I've got it gated down as far as I can gate it down. And I'm still probably putting down too much. Like I said, if we get 20 years out of these trucks, this truck should more than probably surpass that. The only thing we will have to do with it when it gets here is it's, the cab right now is yellow. They build these in Massachusetts. They build them for Massachusetts DOT, Vermont DOT, who's yellow. 95% of trucks go there. We've been in contact with Kevin Mallory here in town. He can vinyl wrap the cab red or whatever we want to do with it for half the price that they gave me to paint the cab. They gave me a price of $5,500 to paint the cab, the truck. They were going to take the seats out, paint it, and so I don't need all that. So basically, that's it. In a nutshell, like Ed said, it comes just under $174,000 for the truck. Jay at Patriot Truck Sales informed me that if a purchase order is signed by the end of this month, they'll take another $1,000 off of that price. And like I say, they will deliver it. Comes with a Viking guy's body and plow set up, the same plows that the town uses. It's a well-known manufacturer. We visited, we went to South Burlington, Vermont, which is where the bodies and the plows are put on, and then looked at the truck. We spent almost two hours there. We had to decide on a style of front plow we wanted. Viking makes probably 40 different plows. You have to kind of pick and choose. And that's what we did. And we found a plow that we liked. More than handle of snow we have here. I have an all-around plow. That's where we are.
Good. You did resolve one question when you talked about plows. On the wing plow, there was some concern earlier, maybe three weeks ago or so, on your behalf.
There are two types of wing plows. One is a full wing, it's a cabled wing. You can pull the back of the plow in and out. Then there's what they call patrol wings or shelving wings. Plow goes up and down, but you can't move the back in and out per se. A full cabled wing is probably $5,000 to $10,000 more than a shelving wing. This truck is already set up with a shelving wing. Our truck now has a shelving wing. The problem I've always had with our truck is the wing arms that hold the back of the plow. The top arm is six feet, the bottom is eight feet. That plow's out there. And I get on some of these narrow roads of maize and drive on parts and it's just, I'm plowing three-quarters of the road, one pass. This truck, the wing, scraping edge of the wing that actually sits on the road is going to be a foot longer than the plow I have now, but the arms are only three foot long. So it's angled back in closer to the truck. It's designed for narrow roads. It does have a cylinder that will push the plow in and out, maybe a foot, that knock the plow in. It's what we call shelving. If we get high snow banks, we'll drop the plow halfway down and we'll push the top of the bank back. So our next storm, we can pile the snow on top of that shelf, which we did after that blizzard last year. We did a lot, a lot of that in the village. Like I said, this truck is designed to plow narrow roads, and that's what we have here.
Good. And it's heavy enough, strong enough. And you just did say it's a diesel engine as you were talking about the horsepower?
This truck will easily haul 10 tons of blacktop. Right now, I have to borrow one of the towns' trucks or I have to pay our blacktop supplier $100 an hour for a truck to sit with us while we're making our patches. Sometimes that can be a six or eight-hour day. You're paying $800 just in trucking, not counting blacktop. I will say the town's very generous with the use of their trucks as well as they are available. Sometimes they're just not available. We can haul on top slail now or on stone. You can haul materials away from a job site, which I'm kind of limited in doing now. We're trying in the water department world, trying to get back into doing more of the work ourselves. And I still have to depend on contractors with dump trucks. With this truck, we'll have to do that. I can do that work myself.
Good. And the board will recall that we were modeling some numbers when we first had the quote from Patriot. And I've been in touch with Salisbury Bank, and we'll talk about that in our regular meeting here. But I thought, like we said, well, Dan's here. Any particular truck questions that he could answer that, you know, those of us that don't drive and plow and drive big trucks would want answered? But I guess what's impressive to me, it's a good price. It seems to match your knowledge of truck quality by engine manufacturer, body, and the plow, which is a little good. And then the configuration pages, it's probably what, 20 pages there of options and things? It's, they've been through that. They've, I think Jake took one look on his own and you and Jake went on a second trip even, right? Is that the sequence?
Jake and Chris went out to Massachusetts in a smaller truck. Chris and I went to the line and looked at this truck.
And it's available too, and it's-
That's the big thing, because no matter what we're looking at, we would probably have to spend what, 10 or 15 grand to get the heavy 96er rolling and the ore. Go with this. And then this is available, which is great, actually, I think. And then, this is a good price. We did look at the financing, but like I said, we'll go into that a little bit later.
This truck's also outfitted with a bar across the back that'll pull chip spreaders. A lot of towns around here look for help when they're doing that. I'll be able to offer that truck now if we get it to help them. And in return, can use their trucks for all blacktop or whatever more blacktop you know. It's a, you know, part of shared services. Saves us a lot of money on trucking. And for the town, the only thing I really have to offer them is it is our lead truck in return for them doing work for us.
So this will cover you for the foreseeable future for your needs for this sort of thing?
Oh yeah, at least 20 years.
Okay.
The truck we have now is a 1996. It's a double frame, the frame's splitting in half. The bottom of the sander is breaking out. The gallop lines are, I think they were steel and are just beyond corroded. It's lived its life. It did its job when it was here. It's just, it's 20 years, 20-plus years old now, so.
Is there a warranty on this truck, Dan?
Oh yeah.
And what is it? Do you know?
Everything's standard one year. We were offered the options of extended warranties. We are going to take the extended warranty on the automatic transmission. That's probably a $25,000 transmission in that truck. So for, I think it was $600-
That's for five years?
Five-year long transmission. The options that we didn't take, we could, we can purchase some at any time if we'd be necessary. Salesman told me that last week when we were up in Vermont. So we are going to purchase the one for the transmission. This truck is going to be, this is a two-wheel drive, rear wheel. The truck we have now is four-wheel. If we run with a four-wheel drive option, which I really don't need in this village, that's about another $20,000 option. So we opted to stay away from that. I mean, Tower Street's really the only hill. With this horsepower, if I can't get up there, I'll just call Jake, he's got a four-wheel drive, small truck, he can plow that hill.
What about, it also sands from a different point, right?
It sands, it sands behind the driver's door. The truck we have now sands out the middle of the back of the truck. This one will sand right behind the driver's door, right on the yellow line, so to say. Plus, it's putting material down in front of your axles. It's giving you traction if you had to climb a hill where the other trucks dropped the material behind the rear axle. So you're kind of on your own.
Alright. Any other questions for Dan? What we'll do is, we can let you go if you want to get your rest for tomorrow's workday. I know, I know people are actually waiting to leave truck.
The boot truck will be on the road at 7 o'clock tomorrow. And then startingly pickup, I know that's a big question around the village, but we're startingly pickup tomorrow.
Well, it was 90 degrees a couple of weeks ago, right? And now it's down to, tonight's the first cold night in a while.
And Thursday's going to be 75.
Good. Well, good. We'll work further on what we have to do on the truck. If I could, you can leave those papers where I can grab them for later in the meeting. If you want, as you're going out, you could hand your microphone to the guy in the fire jacket over there too.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Now you're a star.
Rob Frye is here from Riddick Fire Company, and we'd like to get him in and out too if he so chooses. He's welcome to stay, but they have better things to do probably.
Robert Frye of the Fire Company. We had 81 calls for the month of September. Couple of things that we've got going on as well. We're doing a boot truck fire fest this coming Thursday from 9 to 5, sorry, from 5 to 9 again tonight. We're going to have several boot trucks there. We're going to have the firehouse open and fire trucks out. We've got some light music. We're going to be distributing beer and wine. So that's something that we're doing. Just to, you know, kind of get people out in the community to come over, you know, see what we've done in the community room. You know, get some good food. We've got six or seven different options for food. Sure you'll be able to buy something that you want.
That's all in the fire, the apron area? Where would we, where would we see it?
Yeah, that's going to be on the apron and in the back. So we'll probably park the cars on the grass at the end of the apron.
And that's this Thursday, right?
This Thursday. Yeah. We've also got a dream machine raffle going on, where there's several different prizes. Jet skis, four-wheelers, like the quads and the side-by-sides, snowmobiles. There's even a large mower. You know, you have to choose the mower. You get the leaf blower and the weed blower with it. So tickets are $50 each. That drawing is off of the 4G. It's the end of the month down in, over in Rosendale. We're getting all the equipment from Arctic Adventures. So we've got an open house Saturday for that day. So we're going to draw it right there.
Tell us more about the mower. Is it like a riding mower?
Yeah, it's a, it's a big riding mower, a mower from Stad. It's also a Patriot. You know, it's got, it's a normal, like the commercial sized mower.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, we've got a little bit of everything, so, you know, we're not necessarily produced inside the village.
So if you win, you get to pick any, one of those things? So it's one prize, but one of the-
It's $10,000.
Okay, wow. The reason, reason I ask about the mower is ours, commercial mowers, like our old truck scene near the end. So maybe we'll take some chances and see if we- I wonder if that's legal or not? Yeah, right. Donate it. There you go. That's a good idea. Put a plaque on it.
So there's only a maximum 500 tickets, so our chances of winning are better than most of ours.
Yeah. You said 100 bucks a ticket, did you think?
50.
50, 50, okay. That's pretty good. Good, good return. So on the 81, anything super dangerous, exciting, anything we need to know about on account there as far as? Or the standard pattern stuff, like?
Not really. Just trying to look here quickly. A lot of EMS calls, automatic fire alarms. You know, and they're creeping up in the village too. And it's, you know, the bar students are back, so.
Those do, yeah.
You know, it's not been serious, but you know, you're pulling these people out.
Yeah.
Do you have, you get many false alarms from alarm systems and things like that?
From the systems themselves, not really. There's usually some calls to it. You know, sometimes it can just be just little detectors, you know. There's, there's regular maintenance that goes on with these systems that you install in your house. You know, it's not you just install it and then worry about it for 20 years. You've got to get somebody in there to clean the detector heads and check them out regularly. You know, so it's, they, just like everything else, they require maintenance.
Alright. Any other questions for Rob, boys here? Thank you, sir. And just to hope people are watching, today's show Wednesday on Panda. On Panda, they'll see us Wednesday, so roll out to the firehouse. Thanks. Let's see. Go back to the regular meeting. Before we get going, I've spoken to each board member and Riddick got some really exciting news like 10 days ago or so. As you all know, with our big infrastructure projects, we really look to fund them off long-term, low-interest loans, whatever grants we can find. And whether it be sidewalks or wellhead improvement and the actual water infrastructure and now the sewer project, those have been the sources we look for rather than trying to tap the general taxpayer or the user fee too hard. So we've been pushing at a couple of state levels of grants. And this year, you might all remember that with the state legislature budget, I wonder if they passed that April this year with it, the deadline is. The governor and the legislature threw several billion into some funding for water infrastructure. And Thursday, I got one of the best calls I've had in a long time. The governor's office called and said, "Well, the village of Riddick got a combined $3.2 million of pure free grant money." We celebrated a little bit Friday at our normal Friday brainstorming days. And now we're trying to figure, okay, how do we perfect the promise? You know, it's definitely there and given and available. It's just what paper trail, what work do we have to do to actually get it in? But the big news is that's not low-interest money, that's not long-term money, that's grant money. So we can use it toward Phase 2 as the way it's designed. And then 925,000 of it is dedicated to the sewer. That's by the way the grants were applied for and allowable. So we're waiting, the funding agency that channels a lot of this money is New York State EFC. That's the Environmental Facilities Corporation. And we called them Tuesday after Columbus Day. And they promised they would have the quote next steps letter for us to look at, but it's not here yet. So we don't have it to look at. But overall, I wanted the public and those in the audience to know. And we did circulate it with some press releases and the Journal did talk to us, the Freeman did talk to us. And we thought we'd get it on Panda too. So 3.2 million is real money. It's really great, great news. And thanks to everybody on the board that helped and engineers and folks that put together applications. And it's like we said, it's been the mode of the way we try to get money for our projects. And this one is very, very helpful. But we could move now to more mundane things. The treasury report, which is funded off the general budget. So Cindy, are you ready?
Account balances, general fund, $722,388.47. Water fund, $149,504.13. Trust and agency, $24,066.80. Materials management, $5,739.59. Petty cash, $75. Village Green, $4,136.88. Hardscrabble, $8,147.34. Health insurance, $7,104.82. Monthly expenses, general fund, $96,805.39. Water fund, $22,923.83. Trust and agency, $24,066.80. And materials management, $4,278.17.
Okay, before we move on anything, just, this is, I think, the fourth month of the new fiscal year, which is one-third of a year, which is budget line should be about 33%. I went through, it looks like pretty much every department is dead on where they're supposed to be. And that's a good thing. So I'd entice you all to look at that, at the, like the summation lines by departments where you look. We do have the vouchers floating around. A few of us have gotten through, but tonight if we get another signature on there, so Cindy can pay the bills properly. And then what else? Brent, on the Village Green, does that match with the numbers you're thinking of there? Is it?
Yeah, it's been adjusted accordingly and correctly.
What I would ask, I'm showing on the board, we did mention that we filed our 2016-17 AUD. That's the data we have to give the controller, which essentially shows our results for the prior fiscal year that ended four months ago. And you'll all remember the bad days and then how we've come and created a fund balance. I wanted to show you, it's showing a fund balance of $382,000 right now. The reason I want to point it out is later when we talk about the large truck and options to funding the purchase, I just wanted you all to be aware of those numbers. Remember this controller likes just, likes us to have about fifteen percent of our general fund budget. And this number here used to be two hundred and seventy thousand, but it's not because our general fund budget's gone up a little bit, so. But to be in the right area, three hundred thousand, we s- we start losing points if we get under that, but, so we have three eighty-two. I'm not recommending that we whack it that hard, but later on we'll talk about um, what to do with that. But this is based on AUD that was just filed. So we heard the treasurer's report and uh, is there motion to accept that report? Move, second?
Second.
All favor? Let's see, looks like I need to say something here. As far as lease report, we have for the month of September, it's like the numbers are fairly consistent, the mid threes, three hundred forty-five incidents, breaks out two sixty-five in the village, seventy-four in the town, six in the village of Tivoli. Tickets issued, a hundred and eighteen, breaks out seventy in the village, eleven of those are parking tickets, and forty-eight in the town of Red Hook. Arrests were twenty-one, twelve in the village, and nine in the town. We have the fire report, that was eighty-one, various, eighty-one, just so people know that's town and village, it's not, and it's not just fires, EMS, which is a code word for ambulance service, so. What we're trying to do is get the fire company um, to give us reports like this, they give us verbally now, we'll work with them where to get more detail and so forth. Another hat on there is personnel that I talk about, um, we don't need to go to executive session tonight, but we are working still to try to fill one of our full-time admin folks left with two weeks' notice and uh, right now, we're working with two subs that are part-time, they're not really full-time answers to our situation, but they're carrying some load. And um, we're talking with civil service and we just got um, the eligibility list today from civil service to look at some options that we do, so. But that will segue into an item down in the bullets of general business. We've talked about this a little bit before, but with regard to health insurance and um, what we can and can't do for non-union, non-elected, full-time employees going forward. So we'll talk about that, but that doesn't have to be an executive session, it's not about one person, it's just policy. Those are my input points from um, point, item two. So it looks like Mr. Trustee Trapp, are you ready and in the planning zoning reporting mode there?
Yes, sir. Like to just uh, start off with the, the Planning Federation Board of Directors has uh, prepared our fall classes. And the first of which is coming up this Wednesday evening, October twenty-eighth, from six to eight. In uh, twenty-seven fifteen Route forty-four, Millbrook, and that's the Duchess County Farm and Home Center. Uh, what we have going on is called Architect-Agricultural Districts, Balancing Farmers' Needs and Local Concerns. Gonna have two speakers there, first of all is Dr. Bob Summers, the manager of the Farmland Protection Unit at the New York State Department of Ag and Markets. As well as Brian Skorlick, the Executive Director of Duchess County Soil and Water Conservation District. It's gonna be, um, I think it's gonna be a good class. It may not be as relevant to the uh, to the village planning and zoning boards, as we don't have tons of agricultural land within the village. But I think it's good to understand just how uh, broad the uh, the powers and the regulations as they are for ag and markets uh, can be and with distilleries and breweries and event venues and wedding barns and things coming forward, a lot of these are being couched under the ag and markets uh, uh, umbrella, and I think it's a very good thing that uh, to uh, to understand as much as you can, and Dr. Bob Summers is the man, he he knows everything pretty much that there is about it, so. Uh, you guys, planning and zoning members, it's five bucks, six to eight, we feed you, you know the, you know the routine George, so. Come on out if you're feeling so motivated, and the rest of the class is uh, Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Form-based zoning and sign regulations, two sessions in one night. And Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, ongoing relationship of your comprehensive planning and, and zoning code, so those should be pretty good. Again, all of them, five bucks, and there's also the uh, something that Brent and I attended, the Land Use Law Center provided a, a series of classes that uh, does a great deal for your understanding and how to plan and how to move for the future. And I think I read, and I may have forwarded it to you, uh, about they have a few spots left, they're looking for groups as opposed to individuals, so it'd be several planning and zoning members, it would be best for the, the chairman of the boards and Brent suggested, and I think it's probably a good suggestion, that maybe the mayor might wanna attend so that he has a sense of what this whole thing is about. Classes are impeccable, I can't say enough about it, Brent and I took it, I don't know how long ago, but stu- it, the, the, the information still sticks with me.
I think Charlie, Charlie was involved with that too, right?
I took the Land Use Leadership Alliance training as well.
This is through Pace University Land Use Law Center and
Highly recommended.
It's very good.
And...
Getting volunteered here, so.
Let's see, uh, I'm not sure if the village got this, I picked this up at another municipality that I'm employed. And it's uh, New York State Department of Financial Services, and it's about vacant and abandoned properties, about the responsibilities that mortgage owners services are obligated to maintain vacant and abandoned properties and are subject to enforcement actions and daily fines, so. That's something that certain municipalities have, have had to deal with. House goes, you know, in foreclosure and it sits for six months and the grass gets three feet high and the house begins to fall apart. But now, it's kind of uh, there's a training session, I personally can't go and I think it uh, has crept up on me, I'm oh boy, when is this uh, north country, capital region uh, is October eighteenth, so it's coming quickly here. And I'll pass this down to you and see if anybody has any interest.
Remember that one time we, he came here, politician, county legislator, or whoever, they were working on the law to
Zombie property?
The zombie property law. But it, it never seemed to flourish for some.
Well, looks like it's coming home to roost here now. And um, finally, um, I only have half the reports from uh, from the building department, but the part, it's the, it's the money paid, so. For September two thousand seventeen, fourteen hundred and forty dollars was taken in at the building department. Slowing down as it is, it's still a nice little chunk of change in there, and Mr. Mayor, that is it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Yeah, looking at the letter he handed down, it does say, last year Governor Cuomo signed new legislation to confront the lingering vacant and abandoned property epidemic. Fortunately, in Red Hook, I can think of one we had on one of our streets, and we took it into our own hands in a sense. But it is a real problem if you have a main street or somewhere where you've got dead properties. What we can do is, we can push it up to our planning zoning department, it's probably too soon for this current year, but it's probably...
Keep it in the back of your head if you see a property like that, now we have something that can be done.
There's a law, it says they, he signed new legislation, so that's good, because my com, conference of mayors was pushing this a couple of years ago, and that might be what you're thinking of too. Says to provide a clear understanding of the new legislation, there'll be informational sessions. Thank you, Jay.
I did notice uh, one property on Cambridge Drive, I think it was, it had a foreclosure sign up front and it was, you know, starting to be untended. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, we, we will work on that. And on Jay, when you were talking about the finance report, um, it does look like it includes fire inspections, building permits, the things they do up there. There are, let's see, it looks like two restaurants trying to come in, everybody knows about the Yum Yum on the corner, but there's another interesting kind of Italian deli concept, putting paperwork in to see if she can do something in the village. So um, it looks like one is the newly opened up big shop there. So a lot, lot of food things happening. Let's see, we could then go to Ms. Norris, you wanna talk on your world? I don't know if you have your cool poster.
Show my cool poster, here's my cool poster. Um, we have our Village Halloween coming up Saturday, October twenty-eighth. Um, the main trick-or-treating part for the children will be from one to three, um, it'll be trick-or-treating throughout. Um, the merchants, there will be live music, and the costume parade will be at three. Um, but the event will actually start at noon, um, we're going to have chili cook-off um, contest, which we had last year and was a lot of fun. Um, I think we have fourteen or fifteen different chilis, um, being made by nonprofits, businesses and restaurants. Ulster Savings Bank is basically sponsoring this uh, event, it's gonna be great, uh, so it's five dollars for tasting. And all of those proceeds go to benefit Team Nora, which is a non-for-profit organization that supports uh, people and caregivers in Red Hook dealing with a cancer diagnosis. Oh, but there's also free pumpkin painting, sorry I missed that, so free pumpkin painting, um, with Funshine Nursery School, trick-or-treating, live music from one to three. Um, and then if you happen to have four legs, or have someone in your family with four legs, a dog Halloween, um, is Sunday, October twenty-ninth from eleven to two. Um, I don't have a dog, but I go every year because it's hilarious. Um, they have pet-related booths and trick-or-treating for dogs and a dog costume contest. Paws Dog Boutique uh, throws that every year, and again, it's hilarious. Um, Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival will be Saturday, November fourth, uh, throughout the village of Red Hook. Vendors, demonstrations, tastings, street music from eleven to four. And then uh, materials, materials management, I need to um, change my uh, number there, there was a goof, but for the month of September, we sold two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and some odd cents uh, in garbage tags. We had uh, ten dollars and nine, bleh, ten point zero nine tons of garbage and five point three four tons of single stream recycling. And we paid out one thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-four, sixty-five cents. Uh, we're working on our annual e-waste event, people have already been asking, it's very funny, usually about four months ahead of time, people start asking about what are you doing for Halloween, what are you doing for Winterfest, what is your e-waste thing, so our e-waste thing uh, will be Saturday, January thirteenth, again, we're gonna do this in conjunction with the town, uh, and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement, uh, that's their day of service in conjunction with Martin Luther King Day. Uh, we honestly could not do it without the Bard Center for Civic Engagement, because they do a lot of the heavy lifting. Um, we'll have more details uh, at the next meeting as far as uh, you know, what e-waste we take, it's old computers, it's old TVs, it's DVDs, it's you name it, we basically take it, although there is some charge for the larger stuff. That's all I got.
Well, thank you. Just got the spreadsheet for me here, so. Any different trends, things look pretty much...
We were a little low this month, but, you know, it's not, um...
I do know too, um, the merchants with their first Friday nights, I think they're thinking of moving something to twenty-seventh of October, which would be
Right.
Friday, they're calling it Fright Night, I haven't heard a lot of specifics.
To the best of my knowledge, it's going to be um, jack-o'-lanterns, all lined up, I don't know if there's gonna be food trucks on that night, I know that in the past they do food trucks every Friday nightlights, but I haven't heard about food trucks for that evening.
So it'll be real busy in Red Hook, Fright Night, twenty-seven, Red Hook, twenty-eighth, Dog How Halloween on twenty-nine.
Isn't their library doing their Monster Mash?
The Monster Mash is also on the twenty-seventh.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, conflict. But I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah, I don't know if the merchants knew that, but...
I think they had, were trying for this Friday, but they wanna get hundreds of jack-o'-lanterns.
Yeah.
So they were hoping that by putting it off another week, they would get uh, more jack-o'-lanterns.
Thank you. Let's see, looks like we're headed toward Trustee Lang territory. Water and I don't know if you had any talk on lights and...
Yeah, I might just touch on uh, some of the street lighting issues.
Big list over there.
Yeah, I got a big spreadsheet.
Oh, wow.
It's got highlights on it.
So you're on, Charles.
Uh, yes, so first uh, monthly water report for September. Uh, during the month of September, the water treatment plant treated six million ninety-seven thousand gallons of water at an average rate of two hundred and ten thousand gallons a day. And they used sixty gallons of liquid hyperchloride solution at an average rate of two gallons per day to disinfect that water. And in comparison, in September of twenty sixteen, the plant treated seven million four hundred ninety-four thousand gallons of water at an average rate of two hundred and forty-nine thousand gallons per day. So that represents a year-to-year decrease of nineteen percent. And the plant also used eighty gallons of liquid hyperchloride solution at an average rate of two point six gallons per day. Meaning uh, that showed a twenty-five percent decrease in the use of liquid hyperchloride, so um, that continues to demonstrate our uh, uh, efficiencies and savings based on all the, the water distribution work we've done. Another note, a leak was repaired on nine twenty-seven after a large puddle was reported to the highway department after several days without rain and the water tested positive for chlorine. But that's the only information I have.
Yeah.
Where was this leak?
Don't know where, do you remember where that one was? I know they did something south of UBS, the Lower Lane area, that could be that one, but it's not identified enough for me either, but...
Okay, and then let me just, uh, I do have a conservation tip for us all this month.
That is puddle related.
This is excellent, I'm, I'm glad somebody spent the time. Uh, if you should happen to see a puddle that doesn't dry up after a few days without rain, please call Village Hall between nine and four at seven five eight one oh eight one. Fixing leaks saves much more in operating costs over the course of a single year than they cost to repair, so. Keep your eyes and ears open to strange puddles. And I have, as part of our working with the Hudson Valley Street Lighting Consortium.
Got it.
Uh, looking into the opportunities to uh, both make efficiencies by replacing streetlights with LEDs. Uh, and also to save considerable sums of money by actually taking ownership of those fixtures uh, which we currently pay Central Hudson quite a lot for. I've been walking and biking around the village, uh, trying to marry up the inventory of the streetlights with what Central Hudson has on their list and and, you know, there's, there's a number of cases where the, the information is old from scenic Hudson or where we have a different kind of light, but generally speaking, they match up pretty well. So I mean, I think we're, we're getting into a good place where we can start to really fine-tune that plan, that proposal. And you've been talking to C- Central Hudson and...
I could update you on that.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, two things, um, when Charlie and I were at one meeting, the next steps were promoted, what we should be doing, that's one of the things he's working on with that inventory. Um, another one was, there's certain steps you have to take with Central Hudson, you might all remember that the Public Service Commission enabled this process where we can take ownership of the arm and the light. But quite frankly, Central Hudson, I don't think really wants to lose that revenue stream, it's, the s- savings we can project is forty thousand dollars-ish per year. Which means that's forty thousand dollars they're not gonna get anymore, and if eighteen municipalities are in a consortium, that's, we're probably smaller than some and bigger than others, but it's they're, they're giving up, say twenty times, forty thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus. By the way, our contact at Central Hudson came in and it was a very professionally run meeting, he brought something I can scan and send to all of you, but it was a variation of the sheet we've seen with the light inventory. Then they showed what they could do if they converted them all to LED, and the pitch they're making is, yeah, your savings will be greater if you own the heads, but do you really wanna take the ownership and maintenance responsibility? And I said, well, we've considered that, and that's where we're doing the RFP to get an outside agency. We wouldn't expect our staff to buy a truck, get certified to go work up and around high voltage. But that's, this RFP we've talked about, and it appears later in our agenda tonight where we wanna pass that best value law so we can make the best approach with that RFP process. But anyway, they did put something together where they showed, um, to try to make cause for concern that if you're in the maintenance business, we'll be the ones that have to take the phone call to take a repair and we'll be the ones that get to complain if it doesn't happen fast enough, but I don't see that as a huge thing, like they're not often out. And when we see them out, Central Hudson doesn't show up the next day, and it's not criticism of them, but they kind of bulk them until they come back with a truck and a crew, they don't, they don't run out and change it overnight. The key question for us would be, what kind of number does the RFP generate, and he re- he reiterated that... That to get up and work near their lights, you need to be a journeyman level electrician. And able to work around high voltage, so they won't let, it kind of rules out a lot of smaller electrician type firms, but. So weird to see with that RFP, but the projection sheet he gave, if we convert to LED, stayed with them. Um, we could save eighteen thousand dollars a year, but that's still not quite half of forty thousand, you know, it's, it's, I don't think it's worth. The difference, you know, as far as um, we could really save. Almost the RFPs came in crazy high for the, the maintenance world, you know, it's uh, where if it's, if it ate up that difference. Then it would make sense to stay with Central Hudson. But so now, uh, yeah, I'm not sure how it can be that high for somebody to come several times a year to change out a light or something and. Um, what else was he promoting? He said there is like a through Niserta and what they call a green bank. If we were converting, they would help us with some financing and things, but. But it still didn't really approach savings that were being projected with um, a consortium. So I did take the spreadsheet. It's a big, long, uh, fourteen by eight and a half, so. I can have Cindy scan it to everybody. It's color, it's kind of nicely done, you know, where you, the color actually helps it work. By the way, he did get the unfortunate truth that. They were in the business of trying to save money and have good lights at the same time and the places don't match up yet.
So I do hope to uh, map this all out. G I S map together.
Oh, yeah, wow.
Spells out the location and basically the different type of lights so we can discuss, you know, I mean, if there's any. Issues with, you know, is there enough lighting here? What kind of lights are, are where? In the streetscape, because I mean, there is a logic to most of it. If not all.
East Market Street Merchants pushing for a new light and I reached out to Central Hudson. Apparently one never existed on a pole, sort of by the boardroom.
Probably still being billed for it.
Nah, at least chose, but um, so I explained that. There is some logic to the way they relate that and we could look at it and. Um, but anyway, that's the news. Thank you. We'll work more later tonight on the best value process. Looks like we've gone through. Every trustee except for Deputy Mayor, who has a lot of reporting. Once you're ready to roll.
Yeah, I'm ready to roll. I'll start first with the Village Green. Committee monthly reports, uh, current balances of the related budget accounts, committee beautification. We're at four thousand, shade tree contractual, we're at a minus six thousand three hundred and fifty. And the Village Green Committee checking account is four thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. There was a Village Green Committee held on, meeting held on September twenty-seventh in the Red Hook Village Building. We are preparing our list of tree planting sites for the annual fall planting. And will be members and officials from the Village Green Committee will be going around. Seeking approval from the adjoining property owners to plant trees, so we're looking at it. Early November planting day, um. So we're, we'll be busy in the next couple of weeks preparing for that. We're also looking at. Um, acquiring some seedlings of copper beech trees from a couple of local residents who had offered. To do this, we'll be transplanting those and, and uh. Letting them mature in another site until they're ready to be transplanted into. Our regular fall and spring annual planting season, so that's a, that's a good thing to do and um. We also had a volunteer, Michael Johnson, um. Try to work with the Red Hook Town Tree Committee and the school district. There's a annual Arbor Day poster contest. Um, the town tree commission is currently doing a uh, separate poster contest, so we are. We're kind of leaving that one aside at this point in time, so this will be a busy time for us. The highway uh, monthly report. As Dan had mentioned, they'll start picking up leaves this week, actually tomorrow on the seventeenth. Our residents are reminded to place leaves in a row along the outside edge of the curb. On the streets and place brush in separate piles and limit the pile size to six feet by six feet by six feet. The highway department may not pick up the leaves that they are combining with the brush due to possible equipment damage, so there's um, a piece of equipment that sucks up the leaves. And if the, there's branches and big sticks in there, it's gonna cause damage to the machine, so they'd rather not even mess with that, so separate. Your sticks and twigs and from the leaves. Um, reconstruction of the section of sidewalk. On South Broadway near Ryan Big Savings Bank has been completed and work was performed by Blacktop Maintenance Corporation. At a cost of approximately ten thousand four hundred dollars, just the same company that did the, the new sidewalk for the town. Um, going from the town hall down to hardscrabble. They were in the neighborhood, we, we, we got a good, we think we had a good deal on, on replacing that sidewalk. There was. Uh, no ADA compliant ramps on either end, so it was a nice transition into the town's new sidewalk, so that was complete. And Dan had mentioned the um, new truck and they're already taking, take care of that. And scrap metal was sold, um. And reimbursed on August twenty-ninth for three hundred, three hundred ninety-four dollars and on October third. For the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. Giving this year's uh, total revenue generated one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents, so. Third of the way through, we're almost three quarters of the way to our anticipated revenue. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand seven. Twenty-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents has been generated. And proceeds from this program go to buy, purchase tools. And equipment for the um, Village Highway Water and Materials Management Department and anyone interested. Residents or businesses can contact the Village Clerk's Office. Or the Highway Department at seven five eight eight six hundred and um, Highway Department personnel will. Pick up your scrap metal if you ask them nicely. On the International Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure, we are extremely busy these days. Uh, we had meetings for the sewer project. On September first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth. And we are currently preparing informational survey letters, um, these are going out to property owners in the sewer project service area. Approximately thirty-five have been sent to date. Um, we have a hundred twenty-five properties. The letter requests information regarding locations of existing septic systems. Potential obstacles in construction sites, electrical service locations and size, et cetera. Um, this information will, from, from the responses of this letter will help narrow the scope of work for the project and reduce potential. For future change orders. And we reviewed and revised drafts one, two and three of the proposed Red Hook Sewer Use Orders. I think we've. Actually decreased the size of it. It was up to sixty-three pages, so.
Down to fifty-six.
We're down to fifty-six. We're making headway. So this is the final draft, I think, has been reviewed by our attorney and um. Our associate, C T Mills Associate Engineer, prepared it, Ryan Biggs, the Clerk in Davis. Um, we're working on the draft, construction and permanent easements that are being prepared by. Our land use attorney, Rodenhausen Shaw. And contracts are being finalized for the conveyance of the ten acres of land. And the existing sewer treatment plant at Red Hook Commons, um, by again Rodenhausen and Shaw. And the agreement will be revised to include the new title donation agreement from contract of sale. Once signed, a ninety-day due diligence period begins and this will include site assessments, transfer of speedies permits. Increasing allowable capacity and discharge of the revised speedy permit, speedies permit and seeking approval of final design documents. From the regulating agencies, which is the basis of design reports, so still quite a bit of work to do. Um. And then I think the rest you could read about, but again, to reiterate Ed's announcement, the Governor Cuomo, um. Announced recipients of the Clean Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant award programs on October fifth. And we were awarded nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for phase one and that represents twenty-five percent. Of the four point seven, four point nine million dollar project. Um, and that was the maximum that we could get, but this is good news also is that we were in contact with USDA who did. Also give us a one point two million dollar grant along with a three point seven million dollar, one point eight seven five percent interest. Short or long-term loan, so the total grants for this program, for the sewer project. Poles about fifty-five percent of the capital cost, so that's. Pretty good news. Usually USDA, if we get another grant, would take the money away from the grant that they had offered us, but. This time they're letting us keep it and add to it, so we're trying to figure. How to use that most appropriately for the project. Now, the Red Hook Water Project Phase Two. Meetings were held on September first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth. We're trying to. Finalize all of our forms, um. So we can close on long-term financing and we did have a meeting with George Pop, who's our, um. Because he's our contact, but our, our, our representative with USDA who's been working with the village for a long time and trying to. Find this stuff out and I guess we're kind of threw us off for a little whammy, but we also did receive. As I had mentioned, a two point two eight million dollar grant for phase two, which is a three point eight million dollar total project. And that was sixty percent of the capital cost, so. Um, we're gonna have to. There's some paperwork we have to do and I think well, that's on the agenda I see coming forward, but um. Kind of rewrite how much of the loan we're gonna take out, because that's gonna reduce the amount of loan that we'll, we'll be borrowing. There's a lot of other stuff, but you all can read that in when this is published. And the task force meetings were held on September first, eighth, fifteenth and twenty-ninth. At the town hall, we reviewed the study status of the Salt Hill Watershed and Flood Mitigation Assessment Project. We reviewed the Red Hook Town Salt Hill Watershed Moratorium. Um, we discussed properties and possible property acquisitions for the proposed Salt Hill Trail. And we reviewed the draft of the County Red Hook Local Law D that regulates food trucks. Forming the businesses and proposed zoning amendments for the Upper Red Hook Hamlet Business District. And just a couple of other quick reports. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. Which I'm a member of, there were no CPF Advisory Board meetings held during the month of September. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of September thirtieth. Is eight hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And I see that we'll also be talking about the two thousand eight Community Development Block Grant, um, applications are due. This Friday, October twentieth. On the Salt Hill Watershed Community, um. Salt Hill Watershed Community hosted a symposium entitled Protecting Drinking Water in the Salt Hill Watershed, a regulatory and policy perspective. It was followed up by a panel discussion, um, sponsored by the Hudson Valley Regional Council in cooperation with Pace University Land Use Law Center. Hudson River Watershed Alliance, the Lower Hudson Coalition of Conservation Districts. And the Salt Hill Watershed Community, um, we've heard. From people, um, from, residents from Hopeville Junction talking about their contamination of the water. Um, also Husick Falls and Newburgh talked about the impacts of. Um, their water supply and contamination that were going in there. Now, John Nolan from Pace University. Was on the panel, as was Elisa Chai from the. The Department of Environmental Conservation, the Hudson River Estuary Program. Uh, the Salt Hill Watershed and Flood Mitigation Assessment Project, um, the second stakeholders meeting. Uh, was held on October thirteenth in the Red Hook Town Hall. The goal of this, of this meeting was a status update. To present the findings of the watershed assessment as presented in the first technical memorandum. On the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, I think Ed, you're, you're still going to those meetings, uh, EDC meetings were held on. September thirteenth and twenty-seventh in the Red Hook Village Building. And they were discussing the status and update on the Red Hook Sewer Project. Discussions with the owners of the Schaefer Gaslight Motel Project. Village Merchants Promotions and Friday Night Lights monthly events and reviewed the Economic Development Committee's list of priorities. For projects and prepare implementation plans. Uh, the EDC also sent a letter to the Red Hook Town Board on October third regarding a more streamlined planning board process. And that is it.
Thank you. Alright. We could then move into general business, um, the first bullet is heavy truck update. This steps off other discussions we've had and what Dan filled us in on this evening.
What I did, I don't know, Jay, I'm a little out of focus over here, not me personally, but my computer. If I pull this up.
You all have it in your packets. It starts out resolution number dash two seventeen, uh, twenty eighteen freight liner.
Um. It looks a little fuzzy from here. Do you feel like tuning that in, Jake? Could you uh, is it readable to you or is it?
It's, it's readable. It's a little fuzzy though.
It's more for us to work with. What I wanted to do was, um. Thought I have is, I think we're convinced we need to move ahead with the new truck. Based on not just hearing tonight, the board's been talking about this for probably two months at least, we're a little bit of options and what can we do? Keep the old ninety-six? Take our lumps, spend the money on it or move forward and um, so it hinges on financial modeling, which. We presented to the board a while back. It's, it's not insurmountable, but I think as a group, we just need to concur on. How to move forward financially. So I started a resolution. My gut feeling is we don't necessarily have to pass it tonight. I'm thinking we could tune it and then work on it at our workshop Thursday. The primary reason is, um, right now we have that line of credit, which I'd recommend we're not gonna use that for. Purchasing a big thing. We would head toward a bond type situation, um. And like Dan says, it'll last uh, twenty years, but. It should lead, it lasts at least ten years, which is one criteria for some chips type expenses. So I was brainstorming a little bit. If you take, if you look at the cover sheet, the resolution, the purchase cost is um. That one hundred sixty-four thousand that shows on the attachment. You add some warranties and some changes in the plows. And a thousand dollar credit brings you to a net one hundred seventy-three thousand three fifty-five. We do have the general fund, um, where we could tap into the unreserved fund balance numbers. That's why I wanted to show that before. And we do have, this truck would do like Dan said, snow plowing and material hauling for highway. But would also do in the world of water, some work too, so we have the ability to, to dilute some of the budget across to water fund balance. We haven't really talked about, did we wanna throw any chips? Uh, and I use the second acronym, PAVE New York, funding into it. I cited the budget line there. The bank essentially would like, like any purchase, twenty percent down, so. The, the numbers I have there, the thirty and the five thousand from the two fund balances would satisfy that requirement. Whether we wanted to borrow a little less would be for us to decide and where would we get it from? We could take more from fund balance, we could take something from chips, um. So when you do the math without a chips number in there, there's a balance of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and um. Salisbury Bank is offering really good terms right now. It's, if you look at an attached sheet, there's a ten-year payout. Where you pay one tenth of the principal per year, the remaining principal and. An interest which I'm projecting here at two and a half percent. The reason I wanna hedge a little bit till Thursday, it might be a touch less than two and a half percent. I don't think it'll be more than that, but um, what you do is you pay five-year payout at that interest rate that's locked. And then you're six through ten get relocked at the interest rate then, but you're only paying it on the reduced principal that exists. Five years from now, which seems like an okay option to me. And like we all know, first payment would be due twelve months after the bond closing, so say we close in a month. We wouldn't owe the first payment till November two thousand eighteen, which would be another fiscal year from now. We do also have the potential sale of the nineteen ninety-six truck. Dan described it as in rough shape for road patrol, that kind of, you know, work where you have highway miles at all hours of night, but. It seems to me it would have some value, somebody that plows large-scale malls or office complexes, something like that might wanna pay for it. Where it's not driving really over the highway anywhere, um, so we could, whatever the sale revenue from that. I would recommend we put into a highway capital line, uh, something that would be setting up to pay the first bond payment. A year from now, um, again, it's, we've had some pretty good luck selling them through the county, Duchess County Auction. Um, I think the guys were thinking we might get somewhere between five and ten thousand for it. I think the guys were thinking we might get somewhere between five and ten thousand for it, it would be um, a decent amount. What I wanna show, um, if you look at the third page in a stapled packet, this was some modeling. If you, in that five-year principal payout project, these numbers. The first one shows if you're paying back a hundred forty thousand, we're talking about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. At two percent, the first year's payment with principal and interest would be sixteen eight. We're still, I think, whatever the interest rate is and our little price difference, we're probably within five or six hundred dollars, that number, if interest is up a little bit. Our borrow amount's down a little bit, so it's it's isn't that sixteen sixteen, um. Let's let's call it seventeen thousand, I guess sixteen eight would go up a little bit with a little more interest, so it's about seventeen thousand a year we're talking about. But the two flexible points as of tonight's meeting are, do we wanna reduce the purchase cost? Just to us by other fund sources or increase what we take from fund balance? The goal that we saw on that chart was um. We would like to have three hundred thousand in that fund balance, right now it's just honestly we have three eighty-two. If we take thirty out, we're at three fifty, I'm not too willing to get crazy on sucking down the fund balance, but um, you know. And Brent Brent usually has a pretty good idea with this chips world and where we are in this current year and what projects we might get into. I know when I look at certain streets, yeah, like parts of Benner Road are pretty rough, I think they're. Gonna need something in the next year or two.
Benner Benner Rose, you know, probably getting some new water services at some point and that'll be covered under that. There were some lines that in the general fund that we could look at, that I think you've. Within that thirty thousand dollar unreserved fund balance, you know, you got chips, of course, um. Yeah, five one one zero point two, it's maintenance of streets capital outlay, so we did budget some money in there specifically for for this budget year. Um, we do have some money in the snow removal, five one four two point four two, snow removal equipment budget line. And under the reserve for this budget year, a nine sixty-two. But we also have some, I think, in the, in the. In the reserve fund balance, right, we have a, we've been stocking away a little money per year in the highway and we had some. Surplus revenue that we put additional money in, I believe last last year, two years ago, we didn't have. That much snow, so you know, I would suggest us looking at some of those budget lines and the balances of the reserve account to see.
When you said snow removal, we have equipment repair.
Equipment repair.
Thinking something in that line, is that what you said, you said a number, you said dot four two, right?
Yeah, four two, four two, one, five one four two point four two.
We wouldn't want to take a ton out of there, we're taking like twenty-five hundred bucks or something like that.
I think, you know, judging from the new trucks we've gotten already. Hopefully, we won't experience as much maintenance problems, but five one one zero point two, you should look at under highway. Capital outlay. For this, just for this year, um.
And that's probably, I mean, we have the backhoe, you have the the new backhoe we bought last year.
That was part of that.
Own line down here, let's see, let me just double check. But that's.
I think we're doing pretty good and with the chips too, we're. We have some projects that we've already started drawing on some of the uh, catch basins, but um. A lot of the, I don't know, I'll talk to Dan further about what he sees as being, we we usually try to pave one street a year. But we did have the um, the Pave New York additional and then the snow. Um, emergency snow, so we have some extra money in chips that we could. But we would have to look at all those costs to see what we can do, so I think you're pretty close, you know, once you anticipate about the thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five.
Depends how much you wanna take out the highway reserve fund and that's that budget line's eight nine six two.
Chip says the fifty-two thousand eight hundred in there.
I wouldn't take up, well, we'll be a look at that, but. I think we're, we make a pretty decent down payment.
Well, like I said, I would like to hear what Salisbury Bank told me that they will run us a model with the interest rate. As of this week, so um. But the overall pattern will be in line with those numbers that are stapled on the one model. For all intensive purposes, you're talking in the seventeen to sixteen thousand dollar range. If we put more down, it'll drop it to more like fifteen to sixteen, so let's say we pick sixteen thousand, but we're gonna have to look at budget. Years going forward that we even have, and if we do sell the one truck for, let's say, six thousand dollars, we'll only need ten thousand next year, but we'll still have to. Work with that, but rather than actually pass with a few flex points. Brent and I could pick on some numbers to flex what we're actually putting down and then we'll get the actual interest rate. Like, the sense I'd like to convey is, is everybody on board with doing it, you know, so. Not really asking for a vote, but I think we've been convinced it's probably the way to go. We should go that way, so that makes sense. Let's see, second bullet point we already did, that was the grant announcement. Let's go to bullet point three, I know Mr. Trap Jay and I were talking a little bit on block grant, we're in a bit of a short timeline. I think in my agenda, I had put, do we have a project that we really wanna live and do? Or should we throw our lot in with the town again like we did last year, where they're trying to build that challenger field and. I got a call from Doug Stowinski, they're applying this year for ADA accessible new restaurants and. They would welcome if we did wanna join them, I think there is benefit to our residents, they can walk sidewalk we built. Get to the rec park, we helped fund and get into better, nicer, newer, change, not changing rooms, uh.
This is in the existing rec park? Or the challenger field?
I I'm not totally sure, it's a, if it's, it's definitely ADA compliant restroom is what they told me, if it's if it's in a new field or the current field, I don't know. But I thought, didn't really matter to me.
We got the grant last year with, for the challenger field.
Right, that was more for physical plant, I think, but I think the project's worth a three million, it's a hugely expensive project. And a little bit, but I don't know if you guys have come up with, we were kinda hunting on the phone for ideas and nothing was jumping off and exciting. Any one of us, I don't think, but I don't know where you left it, Jay Bird, did you?
Um, I, it's just a couple of things that we had chatted about and Brent and I, I guess, had spoken like just peripherally. The four corners is still kind of unattended, you know, in terms of the, making it as complete as we can ADA wise. The sidewalk in front of uh, at Church Street there, in front of the church is pretty bad, I I've looked at it a couple of times. Kind of lumpy and bumpy and when you get to church and and Prince Street there, there's no resolution to the sidewalk at the bulb out there. They just uh, terminate, you know, so potential to do something there. You know, redo that sidewalk, put a couple of ADA drops out toward Church Street and at the corner there, um. Just a consideration, time is short, I I'm not sure I have time to to play the game.
Well, that's the thing, Jay and I, we were brainstorming, could we somehow construe? Radar, like pole-mounted radar, warning of speeds near crosswalks by the school as somehow ADA compliant, but it seemed. Maybe like a stretch there too, I think from a recliner standpoint, um. We could pull it together if we're gonna go with the town and throw our lot in, their project is in a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollar range. They could get us some plans, um, they thought if we threw fifty in as our allotment, as our request. Last year we did it, would you have last year, the whatever document, we're not designing or scheming anything, yes.
I I do, I have it sort of in the can.
If we were to for Thursday, what we have to do is technically, we would announce a quick public hearing just to get public input. Um, but I think we'd, we have to show them a resolution. Uh, I guess a resolution supporting the filing and then.
And the minutes of the meeting.
So.
The challenger park I think would be something that would be a a community-based plus. I I'm kind of balancing and wondering which one would be better if we shot for our own. Would we have a better chance of getting it or would the intermunicipal cooperation have a better shot at putting the money forward?
Well, I had during the weekend, um, I was at a social event over at the community center. And county executive was there and the sense I got is that anything with the challenger field is still kind of a golden project, um. And town doesn't really have all the dough to fund it, so it seemed like it would probably meet the test of committee and executive approvals, so.
Can we just confirm that this is for the challenger field? Does it make a difference if if it's for the?
Well, I just remember the ADA, but I could confirm that between now and Thursday, yeah, so.
And no, no issue going with the town on this one end. Give us some time to think about.
More. More, Cogen, application maybe.
But it seems like the consensus will go that way, can you dust off the word document or something that would?
The resolution?
Um, whatever you had from last year, cause it's the same process we're doing again.
I, yes, I'll I'll pick a book, yes.
Was the application, we we just co-sponsored it, right, we didn't have to do a separate application?
The town did it, we just uh, basically threw in with them.
We didn't have, yeah, the resolution was ours and the minutes proving that. So if they have a copy of the resolution. Or their application, it'd be nice.
I'll call him tomorrow and I'll check in with you. All right, but in line with that, let's see. I think we still do have to do a notice of public hearing, I think we'll call a special public hearing for um. Just the block grant process for Thursday, the workshop this week. So Miss Shrelly, can you inhale that for us?
Not much to do.
And I'll just put notice on a wall, on a board.
Oh, sure.
But I'll ask for a formal, um, so that we can get the uh, application out the door on the twentieth. I think primarily because we lost a week last week with the non-Monday meeting and then the deadline of this.
Nineteenth.
Yeah, so we have the workshop on the nineteenth and I'd like to open up the public hearing on block grant. S- um, suggestions and application for people to know, some new people in the audience. Block grant is federal money that's moved through the county and Reddick has built a lot of sidewalks, drilled a new well with it. Um, the most recent things we've used it for, but. We've reached a demographic where we only qualify for what's called ADA compliant projects, so we have to look for ones that fit that little niche of a project, so. That's why the compliant bathrooms and sidewalk edges, those type of things are what we qualify for now. But it's not, it's a federal money that comes through, anyway, um. It's public hearing night tonight, I think, let me find. If you guys could look in your packets, it's one, um, resolution seven, public hearing. Starts out where is the village board and furtherins of the proposed development of a sanitary sewer system. Like to do this before our next regular monthly meeting, this will be to review and take input on the sewer use law. Like Brent said, it's reduced from sixty pages to fifty-six pages, the concept is for the Latin public, we now have no sewer system at all. So not only do we have to build it, but we have to structure the administrative and operational text that will make it operate from a. Law standpoint, um, and then as part of that, there would be a fee component, which would be a separate hearing and different things, uh, but. But the the fees have been out there publicly, um. So what council drew up for us was a formal. Public hearing notice and then um, in the packet, he drew up for Cindy the um, what she has to put in the newspaper. Like the regular attendees know, we've been working on this for several months and it's so complicated, it's now down to fifty-six pages, but. Been going through it with engineers and lawyers and us, just trying to get the wording and different things that we understand that it makes sense and so forth, um. At one point, when I looked at the uh, the covering resolution here to set the public hearing, I just wanna get your board's input. Says where is the village board of Reddick and furtherins of the proposed development of a sanitary sewer system in the village has prepared and is considering the adoption of a local law. Establishing the regulation for construction and operation of a sanitary sewer within the village and that goes into setting dates. He he references the draft of a local law, do you have a tentative local law number you could give us to plug in there?
Yeah, I don't have that. What you're looking at.
By me?
I don't have that.
Um, it's um. He's got a local law number, can you give us a hypothetical like from your book, like if it's the next one? Three?
Think. I think the local laws will be passed this year.
Well, if you are, you could double check that, um, but my question is in the first paragraph, board is um, it's a. Local law establishing the regulation for construction, I'm not sure the word construction is necessary. It's what, what, what it would regulate is after the service areas, service area is built and done. It will regulate how and when people can join into a new user during the process of that.
Well, doesn't it regulate the use and maintenance of the sewer?
Yeah, and I'm not really sure that, it's not like our law would regulate the bid awarded winner contractor how to build it.
It would would regulate the expansion of that and there's certain minimum that they would have to follow as far as.
Yeah, so.
This capacity in the plant and.
And I'm not sure how important it is, but I just wanna get all you guys, we have a lot of very good wordsmiths in the group, um. It's a little regulation administration and operation, um. Like you said, to me it's not, we wouldn't give the law to the contractor, so here's what you have to build, you know, so, um, so. Or maybe I might make it too much of a, yeah, it's uh.
Uh, the law talks about, you know, violations, you know, what to put in, what not to put in, you know. Selling outside of the village boundaries, you know, to different uses. How things are, the construction part of it is not that regulated. Cause we took a lot of that out, a lot of that standard engineering that would be reviewed in the in the engineering documents, but.
I guess my point, and I think we're on the same page, nobody else is gonna really construct. A new system would be us, but how you would join would be dealt with in the law.
Right, and then how?
Materials you use, but it's after the first thing is built, so.
It's reg- it's regulating basically, the the regulation of, you know, again, if there's an industrial user, it talks about that, if there's. Things that are exceed certain parts per million, it talks about that and maintenance who will. And the easement who owns and operates, um.
So it sounds like you're okay with that word in there, I mean.
Administration would cover.
I think administration should go in separately is what I'm thinking, um.
So for administration and operation and construction or expansion?
Three, I'm thinking three. It's gonna be a question of, operation is more functionality than it is admin, when you reach your bills. So if we said administration.
Construction administration and operation? Kinda hits it all.
The problem is, he sent this to me as a PDF, so I couldn't go in and whack it, I don't have the, so. What I would ask, I put in will be regulation for construction administration and operations, hell, we'll deal with it if you wanna make notes on your own.
Give me a copy.
Yeah, we can send it to him in the morning and he can do it in two seconds, um, so you think local law three would be the, um. So in essence, we're looking to set the public hearing next week, next month rather, thirteen of November, seven PM at Village Hall. Um, so the clerk will put it out in the paper. I have circulated to you guys edition four revised dash ed, which means Brent's always been at me. We're looking on the time, but we're in compliance now with all the timelines and things we need to be, so. But we're in compliance now with all the timelines and things we need to be, so, um so anyway, I would ask that, uh. Do you have a resolution book with Houston D or?
Twenty five.
Twenty five, but I handwrote a number on top of this and have Rich Wilson put that in, resolution number twenty five. Setting a public hearing dash, I'm gonna have him ask the word sewer project or sewer, let's see, sewer, sanitary sewer system. You guys ready with that?
Village Red Hook sanitary sewer use ordinance, or do you wanna change that to law? Are you gonna change that on your? It's gotta be changed, it's gotta be final form.
Well, let me see. Well, I agree with you, but let me just see, cause I know we changed some words of chapter. Let's see if it. Yeah. Did I did, there's some revisions ten twelve, let's see. Yeah, you're gonna have to change that one right there. So we're gonna call it resolution number twenty five, resolution setting public hearing. Village Red Hook sanitary sewer use law, okay? And the text will will add that word administration after the word construction, will insert local law three. So say therefore be resolved that pursuant to section twenty, the municipal home rule law of state of New York and public. A public hearing on said proposed local law shall be held thirteen, day of November two thousand seventeen, seven PM at Village Hall. Seven four six seven South Broadway and that notice the time and place of such hearing describing in general terms the proposed local law. Be published once on or before third day of November twenty seventeen in the Kingston Bailey Freeman, a newspapers newspaper circulating in said village at Red Hook. I would move that we adopt this resolution twenty five, is there a second? And any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. Thank you. What have I got next? Let's see. Stay with the bullet points, um. Um the next one, phase two and sewer wea, grant forms completion hyphen a thargesign docs. What I'm trying to state here is, um like Brett talked about and I announced with the grant money coming in. It does change some of our funding options with USDA instead of spending or borrowing three point eight million for phase two. Essentially knocks it down to rounded here, one point five million dollars of borrow, but it's gonna be a lot of EFC paperwork and. Y'all might remember the great grant money we got for the parking lot, but the extreme amount of paperwork it was to get the money. Um I envision myself and few of us looking at a lot of paper and dealing with a lot of Albany people. So I would like to get a blanket statement, not to um supersede any authorities, but just so. When EFC sends some forms and say, okay, here's what I have to do, the board has to do, I can start transacting and getting things moving. Cause the the catch for us, it's a bad, um it's a good situation to be in. The the EFC short term money that we built phase two with is a three year window and we have to. Close, we have to pay them back in early January two thousand eighteen. So we were setting up the closing with USDA to happen like in the next couple of weeks for three point eight million. Now we don't have to close for three point eight million, we can close for one point five. But it could shorten or somehow affect what we. Tell EFC, they're gonna, on one hand, they're gonna be saying, we wanna give you two point three million, but in early January, you have to give us back three point eight million. So I'd like to find a way to say, well, let's all agree that we don't need to give you three point eight, we just need to give one five, and how do we do that? Is there gonna be a discussion in paper case? I would just like the board to be aware of that and give me some authority to, um to work on it.
Hopefully we'll be dealing with EFC and not with the dormitory authority or.
Yeah, that's our hope. What he's getting at is the parking lot was monitored or dispersals were handled by DASD, which is the dormitor- dormitory authority. And they're really hard to deal with, um but I just thought, not to be too formal, but. Um even in the form of a motion, I thought that given the good news that we have this grant money coming in from what Brett. Characterizes drinking water and clean water, wea money, um that the mayor have authority to sign docs to make. Proper financial windows open and close, we're not gonna accept or reject the money or anything, it's just like we gotta be able to. Reel and make certain transactions happen, so, um I would ask for a motion saying that. With the news that the village Red Hook received, two point two eight, um. Drinking water, wea money and nine hundred twenty five thousand dollar clean water drink, wea money, um. The mayor be authorized to sign a documents to work the financial transactions to the benefit of the village.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you. What you got?
Two point eight two million, I think that's two point two eight.
Two eight.
What did I say?
Two point eight two.
Uh, is that my first transmission?
And this one, this one I'm meaning.
No, it's two point two eight is the right number.
Right.
And you add them up, it's three point, I think when the guy called me on that Thursday, he said you got two eight, I I heard a two point eight.
That's all I needed to hear.
So I immediately emailed the board, hey, hey, but then I looked at the website, it was two point two eight million, but when you add nine hundred thousand, it comes up to three point two.
Yeah, sixty percent of.
Yeah. But, um, let's see, next item, set public hearing best value law. This is in line with our discussion on the streetlights and.
Can we put a resolution number on that?
Uh, just a motion.
Just a motion, okay.
I I have another question before, so the resolution, the other resolution.
The last one, twenty five?
Local law adopting the village of Red Hook, say that's something we'll do.
Which one is Brett, I'm sorry.
This one right here. Nope, not that one. Uh, but I don't have that, there's a lot.
No, well, that's later in the game if you read it, that's when we're done.
Alright, can I hold on?
Yeah, within this packet that I printed, but. Um. Public hearing best value law. This is in line with the streetlight purchase project, um you would essentially be modifying our procurement law. And, um, what I gave you was a packet. We stapled a sample local law that comes to us through, uh, my com- conference of mayors. I plugged in some data, essentially. What we do is hold a public hearing, again, I would say I'd like to do it at the next meeting, um. Let's see here, whereas, what did I pick when I was, so Cindy, that'd be local law number four. And, um. I was thinking, we'll do it next month, I don't know how long, the first public hearing ago, but we would do it after it. And I think we just noticed it at seven fifteen PM and when it happens, people would be here. This one would be enabling us to, um, modify our procurement policy, so we could be. Able to do what's called piggyback contracts when other municipalities go out to bid, we could sit with them while we're getting that. Installation and electrical repair contractor, but just so everybody knows, the reason I stapled the the actual law to it as well was. Best value is defined in New York State Finance Law, section one six three. When awarding contracts under the best value standard, the village must consider the overall combination of quality, price and other elements of the required commodity or service. That in total are optimal relative to needs of the village. Use of the best value standard must rely wherever possible on objective and quantifiable analyses. The best value standard may identify as a quantitative factor whether offers are small businesses or certified minority or women owned businesses. As defined in the New York Executive Law, the best value standard may only be used for purchase contracts, which includes contracts for service work. So to me, that's what. But excludes any purchase contracts necessary for completion of public works contract pursuant to article eight. So like we said at one of our other meetings, it doesn't really go into when we're building sidewalks or sewers or water mains. So, so, anyway, that, so the resolution, kinda a lot of words, but essentially we're saying that I'd like to set it for thirteen November seven fifteen PM here at Village Hall. Um, so that would be resolution number twenty six, is that correct? I would offer as a motion, is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, let's see, maybe a little discussion here. Um, I'm gonna skip one bullet for a moment, seasonal sidewalk designation option, route one ninety nine West Market. Correctly, people come in to see me and probably others, um. Years ago, we used the grant money, the ARRA money to build the West Market Street southern sidewalks, so. We could alleviate some of the burden, the infamous brick wall, which is eight feet plus or minus tall. With about twenty to thirty inch sidewalk in front of it and then the curb and the state highway. Which is pretty much impossible for anybody to clear once the state pushes rolled melted snow onto it. Um, I think they can deal with if they have an inch or two, something where they can whack it and get through, but. We had a precedent, I wanna see what the board's thought was, we're coming into snow season, um. Could we designate two options there? One is make it a seasonal walk, like we did the walkway down. Just, and, um, and then somehow in types, I copied the school superintendent on it, we did build the south walk. And then the school, to me, the main entrance to campus is right there at Phillips and West Market. Where students can cross at a crosswalk that's guarded, get onto the campus and then walk to the high school in the back, you know, through the football field area. I I and if you're, if you live in the eastern village, you come in that way, if you live in. Like the Garden Street Center, you come up Phillips and even from like the better side, you could come up on our south sidewalk. Get over to the middle school and cross edge, I just think, you know, it's it's it is kind of a burden for people to be expected to clear that. And do we have an option? Do we wanna do it? It's just, um, my inclination would be somehow. Try to say from November first to March, something consistent with our no parking timelines, you know, no street parking, um. Yeah, it would involve modifying our code a little bit, um but it just seemed to me. I don't know, I couldn't clear that sidewalk myself if I lived there and, cause you, A, you can't throw it over the wall and you can't by rule throw it back into the street, so. I know what you're doing, that's, I've been there, you know, a hundred years people have been dealing with it, but now that we have the second sidewalk, and I think. One of the reasons we built the second one was to take a little load off that other sidewalk and, um, but Brent, did you have any input? You were in the ARRA sidewalk business there.
Yeah, we were doing the safe walks, safe routes to schools back then and that was a big reason to get that there because. It is difficult to put the snow and I can't even see our, where a a snow blower would work.
Can't, how do you get over?
And if we plowed it, there may risk damage to the wall.
Yeah.
So, you know, looking at all options, I would take the best option would be. Make it seasonal, make sure that, you know.
And so we communicated to the school, hey, welcome them in the campus and we'll keep, you know, the other owners will, uh.
Cause it is dangerous if it, if the ice freezes up and they start walking on it, cause they just slide right out.
Mr. Trapp, any thoughts over there?
No, no, I agree, um, I've talked to a couple of people that live over there and they explain.
Yeah.
The difficulty of trying to, you know, you blow it one way, DOT blows it back and it's just dangerous to walk there.
Yeah, I know our driveways, you know, I shovel my driveway, it's easy, but when you get to the rolled snow from a plow, it's like ten times harder, it's like. I can imagine the whole sidewalk and that, it's like, so we could, um, move ahead. Insert seasonal, that's probably. It's probably a sign on each end mounted somewhere, I don't know what's, it's probably a pole there or something.
We would designate it for the length of the, uh, of the wall?
I think that would be fairest, you know, the whole length there.
No, but I would feel comfortable with, you know, at least trying to consult the school and that, issue let them know so they can notify the students.
Yeah, I mean, I, my daughter is in high school and and my concern with walking through the middle school back to the high school. Is you're basically going through an active parking lot where buses are going in as well. So I would just want, if she's cutting through the middle school to then go up to the high school, that there is. Um, knowledge from people parking and people driving in that there are pedestrians there, uh, to be just super careful of. High schoolers, cause I think a lot of people think, oh, you're, we're walking to the middle school, you're gonna be on the sidewalk, you're gonna go straight to the middle school. But if you're coming in, you're gonna be taking a left and going up to the high school. Where you're dealing with buses, you're dealing with an active parking lot, you're dealing with parent drop off, I would just want it to be known. That children will be walking, riding their bikes, et cetera, to get there so that it is safe, because they have to take that option as opposed to the sidewalk.
Is there a crosswalk there now? Somewhere, I think there is.
There's a crosswalk at the middle school.
From the school to the football field, say?
Oh.
Yeah, there's one from Philip- Phillips across west.
Right, but in the, in the camp- in the campus itself.
I thought there was one there, but.
There may be, um, I just know that that parking lot can be intense in the morning, if you, I mean, if you've ever done parent drop off. It's a nightmare, um, so again, I would just want it somehow alerted to people that. During those months, you know, pedestrian, pedestrians slash bikers will be more active and to just be. More cautious, I mean, they should be cautious anyway.
Yeah.
That's my only concern.
I hear ya, I kinda think there's a crosswalk there, but it's still an issue, but, um.
But, I mean, as we've discussed before, everyone monitors crosswalks.
Close to Phillips Street to the entrance into the middle school.
Well, if we designate it seasonal, it takes the burden off the adjoining property owners to clear it, whether the students will read it.
Right, no, I mean, again, I mean, we have to do it, I just want it to to make sure that it is safe for the children who are walking and biking.
Yes, I think I agree with the school.
Well, I did copy Finch on the first like thought email I sent you guys and I haven't heard from him, but I could reach out to him and do something. Another softer topic, uh, Amherst Road study update, um, we did. Get some communication from the Duchess County Traffic Council, um.
Transportation.
Transportation Council and they're trying to set up a really good meeting, um, with some pretty high level DOT folks for us. They are putting traffic count strips on Amherst and Firehouse Lane to start getting data for us. Um, I put like five bullet points that I thought we needed to talk about, including Amherst Road. Um, and they're trying, they're suggesting, I was suggesting Fridays might be good option meeting dates for us, but. The first two I picked, November third and seventeenth, did not work for them, so, that's, it's one of those things like trying to get ten people in a meeting. It takes us longer than we like.
Is it a Friday that's an issue or just those, those two dates?
I don't really know, I figured for us, we have some availability Fridays, yeah, some of us, and, uh, I thought, oh, that's a good idea and. They they didn't say why, they they just said those two didn't work, so I'll keep leaning on that, but I think for the public to know, we're working on that a bit. And then, um, the last thing I had on the bullets was health insurance code working change. Um, my words for, um, we talked about it a little bit. Right now, the union contracts for highway deal with, well, we have to provide highway as far as health insurance and how much they contribute and so forth. Same thing with police department, then we have, we have non-union admin staff, I'll call it. We're, we have two people that have worked here fifteen, twenty years that we wouldn't impact. But I think we need to find a way for any new hires full time that would qualify for health benefits to be. Um, in a new internal tier, I'll call it, um, my suggestion is that. We would only buy them the, a single person policy and they would have to contribute ten percent. They then could also have the option at their cost to buy into the pricing we get for a spouse plan and or a full family plan. What it would involve is us agreeing to do that, um. In that case, I'm not convinced that that's law, that's just our internal procedure, um. And one thing that came up was, what I'd be talking about is that. And one thing that came up was, what I'd be talking about is the non-union employed people, not um, any elected. Official, we're technically employees too, but this would only apply to admin staff, non-union, non-elected folks. Um. I would like to proceed that way, like I said, I don't think it involves a particular person, so we don't have to go into executive session on it. But I thought, we did talk about it a little bit once, um. But it's one of those things, what are the unforeseen consequences, you know, if we could all think about it a little bit, are there any, I, I, I don't think there are, you know, it's a. The union contracts stand by themselves, um.
This doesn't violate or be in conflict with any civil service requirements that you know.
Not that I know of, Brent, um, it's a good question.
No, it doesn't.
I don't think, you know, no, they're not. They don't have any special rules for health insurance, like, eh, like we know, the employee health insurance, but um. You know, with the volatility in the market and what we're, you know, I think it's just, I think where we should go with, with that. That type of position, like I said, it would not be retroactive, uh. We would state that in the text, but kinda wanted to bring something.
New hires and.
Yeah, well, I think like after October first, something that's recent, but. Um, excuse me, I'm finding it cold, I hope you're not getting killed on the counter, um. Um. Anybody have any thoughts of any other consequences? Brent mentioned civil service, um.
Are we in line with what other municipalities offer as far as health insurance?
You know, I looked at a study, to be honest, they're all over the place, like. I'd go to some meetings, it's called the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayor's Association, and it really is. You can't find a pattern, it's cause there's one thing they were all looking at was what, how do we all compare them, um. You know, it's, it's nothing there. But. I, I could ask civil service, just to be sure we're not stepping on any pattern that we don't know about, but um. But I, we're directors of our own fate, where we could say, hey, look, we have this rule and these people have worked here twenty years, but now you just. Can't really afford to do it anymore. Alright, I think we hit all the bullets, I think, today, health insurance. Good, um, any other board member ideas, business input? So we have the workshop meeting this week, three days, whatever it is.
You're gonna miss the food trucks.
I know.
Pardon?
You're gonna miss the food trucks.
Food trucks are Thursday night. And we have a meeting at six thirty and then.
We shouldn't be too long.
Yeah, it's a short, everybody has the agenda, I put it in.
Yeah, yeah.
Is anyone attending Reddit together anymore? Is there one, are you?
Start today, isn't it?
Yeah.
I've gone, but um, the last one then goes out to Civic Community Center around a little bit, like an evening or something, it was.
Yeah, I went to one over the summer, but I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make the last one, but they don't meet, well. It's, it seemed like the pattern is broken in their meetings, and it's, they're not meeting as frequently. Anyway, as is our custom, we have people in the audience, do you have any particular question for public input? And uh, Mr. George, I think we'll give you this. I'm not sure, cameraman, did, did the highwayman come through okay with sound? Okay.
Uh, I guess he's following you.
Okay.
Um, it was nice that the fire department finally showed up, uh, their report really was not very good. At least maybe you give them a copy of our police report, maybe break down fire accident E M T and town or village.
I agree, I agree, what we're gonna do is um. Our police use, our police use Police Pro is called and my approach will be. When we were doing the contract talks, they did give us printouts, and I had to do a lot of breakout analysis of the printout. I think we're working that direction, but I agree.
Didn't Mr. Fry say that the, the previous time that was combined, town and village?
Yeah, I don't think he's been able to, to break it down.
Yeah, but like I said, what I did was, Jay might remember, we had a big nine hundred.
Right, yeah.
Item sheet, and I was able to pull out town versus village and a U N S.
I'd like to see it on a monthly basis broken out, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, they can even send it in, they won't have to send somebody over for that, but you can read it in like you do the police report.
Yeah, we, we did offer them the um, option of a digital transmission to us, what they think.
I don't think they wanna give up that information, honestly, this, they report to the state, I'm sure, every little thing, but.
Yeah, it's, cause, yeah, I agree, no, it's, but I do feel like we are. Trying to get closer and closer to them, and we, we'll get them where they have to.
Okay, uh, I wanted to bring up, uh, I guess would be South Broadway, the flooding issue.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it's really dangerous, given that hybrid cars only have four and a half inches clearance underneath them, with a panel underneath. And you get six inches of water, your, your drive wheels and your steering wheels are off the, off ground. And you're gonna slide sideways. So it's, I think you should notify the state who owns the road apparently, that they should look into it and address, it's, it should be their burden, not the villagers.
It's actually on the agenda, you know, with the Dutchess County Transportation Council, the D O T, you know.
Well, I think a letter specifically, maybe even having some signed receipt notifying them of a dangerous condition. Because of liability issues, so they can't say, well, we didn't know, you didn't tell us. Whoever's supposed to be in charge of that. You know, it doesn't happen that often, but when it does, that street's almost impassable, I guess, I, one car did get stuck last, uh, early this week.
I think it's prudent to put them, a, a, as, as you explained to me one time, Ed, on notice. You, you know, like, we're advising you that there's a situation, so now you know about it, if something happens, it's your responsibility now.
Yeah, that's, I'm looking for something like that. It, it goes into engineering and stuff, and it's draining basically through their system. Uh, if they can address it in some way, it's, should be, it should be their responsibility, cause they won't let you do it. But it puts them on notice of a dangerous condition, if nothing comes of it, fine, but if it does. It'd be good to have any insurance on that.
That's a good point, what we did, when we were talking about the D O T and some other references, the Amherst Road Study. Like I said, I put five bullet points on things we wanna talk to them about, and that's one of the five. And what Jay was referencing, and some board members might remember. I don't know, four or five years ago, remember when the pond issue arises periodically? There's an eighteen eighty nine drainage line that runs from the pond through, used to be known as Massano Pond.
Well, there's two lines that run, one, one's above the other.
And then the D O T, the D O T has a line from, it kind of mimics the, the direction, the same way. And they came with us and we dug down, trying to find, what their catch basins are supposed to do is pull the water off the road through like. A conga, conglomeration point or an aggregation point in St. Christopher's parking lot, and then shoot it further southwest. Something's broken and it's probably a million dollar thing.
Oh, again, eh, eh, one accident and you got a ten million dollar lawsuit.
But our perspective is that it's not ours and it's on our list to talk to.
Yeah, I, I understand, that's why I'm saying there should be notification made to the authorities that are responsible.
The only good part is that one day, it was Monday, I think it was Columbus Day, wasn't it? There was a downburst remnant of Nate came through.
Yeah, right around six thirty, it was one earlier, it was already flooded when I came through at six, but six thirty it got worse.
It only floods, you know, we do monitor it, like I think Sandy Irene Lee. And then if you get a monster, monster short burst, it just can't, it's the catch basins and, but we do rely on, hey. State maintains curb to curb, it's their catch basin that's not pulling the water, you know, but we will and we are on top of it with them.
I think we actually cleaned out that catch basin. When we did some of the catch basin.
You said yesterday, you did.
Yeah, it's purely a drainage issue when they gotta look at it, yeah.
Where it goes.
Got overwhelmed that day, not, well, ten days ago, whatever it was, it was uh.
Not the first time, but.
Oh, no, that's pretty regular, but, you know, I had been driving through it this time, so I said, well.
Oh, you were, oh.
Give you something to talk about, uh, the other thing I'd like to bring up is. What, not just this board, for the last twenty-five years, the boards have been looking at getting some kind of a snow fee, removal fee for the business district. I bring it up every year, if you were able to do something like that, you'd have some funds there to put towards paying for the, the, the plow truck. Portion of it could be offset the cost of the village and the rest portion of it can go towards the equipment.
Yeah, we have Brent and Jay and anybody can chime in too, but we do have something on the shelf, so to speak, a business improvement district. But when a recession hit in two thousand eight through whatever it took four years to bring the center some vitality. You wouldn't wanna impose, what it is, it's a separate fee for like, things like lighting and snow removal and garbage pickup, you know, it's to help.
Well, you're gonna do it with the source system.
Well, that's, but that's a, a related point, they will be asked to pay toward a sewer system now, so.
For the privilege of being in this fine metropolis, uh, you know.
Yeah, how much do you push them?
Well.
But, you know.
Apparently, it was, the village had no qualms about it, neither does the school around here have any qualms about charging for everything, so.
Well, no.
I think that's an appropriate fee, being as the rest of the village doesn't get a benefit from snow clearance over there, snow removal.
So no fees, it seems like you'd be a little duplicitous there, some fees are okay, but some aren't, so, but anyway, it's something where we would um. We think about it, you know, it's, um.
We still have it in our back pocket.
I just wanna get, move to the front pocket once in a while.
Well, we will, we appreciate your input, what else?
I'm done.
Got the guy with the beard back there, is he uh? Just say who you are, we know who you are, but uh, just.
My name is Brian Jalanas, I'm a local resident. Well, actually, my uh, motorcycle club wants to do a helmet drop to benefit the local um. Food pantries, you know, the local churches and the uh, Community Action Agency. And they nominated me to come talk to whoever, because nobody has a clue who, who we talk to.
Tell us what a helmet drive is, what is it?
Well, it's basically the same thing the uh, fire department does, it was a boot, except we would be using motorcycle helmets. And we were wondering, what do we have to do? I know, it's a little, you know, so that's what I'm here for.
Yeah, okay, sorry we made you wait for the whole meeting, but.
No, I, hey, actually, I found this interesting.
Hope you enjoyed yourself, um. Yeah, there's a catch twenty-two with boot drives slash helmet drives, and it's. It's a state highway in nine and one ninety-nine, so. And from what we know, they're technically not sanctioned by D O T.
I figured that much.
When you're on a state. Yeah, I guess because they impact traffic and different things happen. But your cause is worthwhile, when are you thinking of doing it, is it?
Well, we were thinking about on the fourth of November, because we wanted to do it before uh, Thanksgiving. And we wanted to present the money to the uh, food pantry before.
It's the chocolate festival.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It could be a good day.
I, I didn't realize that till I came home.
Yeah, well, you could do it off-site, like. Guess what I thought would be, like say Baywright's old C V S parking lot, like, could you get yourself off the highway? But have bikes, you know, something.
Actually, it's not for us, you know, it was to stand in the road and get the money from the cars passing by. Our bikes won't be, you know.
Oh, so you wouldn't attract bikers to do it.
No, no, it's, it's like standing in the middle of the road as the cars stop that they.
I thought then you would invite like five hundred bikers or something.
We could do that, but you really don't want us to do that.
Yeah, that's scary, come on.
No, it's not, not to do with that, it's just we uh, you know, some people get a little nervous. We just, we just did a funeral over in Kingston where we had two hundred and fifty people and all of a sudden cops showed up everywhere. But they were cool.
Oh, cause you were scaring people?
Yes, and a lot of loud bikes.
Have you spoken with the, the fire company to see what are the procedures that they have to go through to do that?
Actually, I just got this dropped in my lap, and I really, you know, he was sitting there, I was like, I could have asked him, but. But you guys are, I didn't wanna interfere with the meeting.
Village of Rhinebeck does them all the time.
Yep, yep.
All the time, so.
We wanted to bene, we wanna benefit just Red Hook, and we were leaning more towards our local food pantries, like uh, St. John's. The Methodist Church and St. Chris, more so than uh, the Community Action Agency, which is a whole county.
I could look for, cause we did research it, again, probably four or five years ago, and it's probably on my computer, I couldn't find it right now for you, but.
I'm not rushing, well, I am. My wife, my wife is going in for some major surgery on the seventeenth of November, and I wanna be done with this before that. And I wanna be able to devote my time to her for, for that.
Yeah, it's, like I said, but the, the general recollection is that they're frowned upon by D O T and. Even for fire companies, they're, they're better, they theoretically would be safer in the middle of the road, they have gear that, you know. They glow in the dark and they light, yeah, they.
Well, again, we're, we're not opposed to that, we would be more than willing to wear, you know, reflective vests and whatever else and.
Came up once with a, a football club, not the Raiders, but some, they had like fourteen year old kids standing in the middle of the road, it was like, ooh.
We're all adults, and we all ride motorcycles, and we are not adverse to danger, because we deal with it on a daily basis.
Alright, well, let me look up that research for you, and I'll um, track you down November four.
I just live across the street.
Yeah, and then what else could we do, could, cause the cause is noble, you know, if you come. Trying to give a house, you could raise a few bucks, but it's uh, but I'll, I'll find what I, I'm thinking about, show you.
Alright, uh.
Thanks, man.
And that, that's all I had, thank you, and it's been very interesting people, thank you very much.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, have a good night, guys.
Okay, guys.
Take care, thank you.
Well, I think we then can um, move to pay bills after audit, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kavalec, I think we've learned our course, do you feel we can close this meeting?
I, yeah, absolutely, I can make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second it, all in favor? Alright, everybody.